Good. All right, let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic. One nation. Indivisible, ever and ever. All right, good evening, everyone. Back together. And we will call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And we'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. Rory, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
No, I see no public has joined us this evening, so we will skip to item number four. Approve minutes from the June 2nd, 2020 regular meeting to have a motion to do so.
I move, Trish.
Motion by Trish, second by Anne Marie, who's raising her hand. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes, I motion passes seven zero. Item number five, approve minutes from the June 9, 2020 special meeting. Have a motion to do so?
I'll move, Chris Vaughn.
Motion by Chris, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Chair votes, I motion passes seven zero. Item number-
Abstained, I abstained, Kurt, I wasn't there.
I'm sorry. So, please note Mr. Finley's abstention, so the motion passes six zero one. Item number six, first selectmen's report. Let's see, tomorrow starts the next phase of the state of Connecticut's reopening plan. Accordingly, we will be taking, making some changes to ours as well. The Seymour Public Library, we'll start there. So from June 17th to June 29th, they will provide curbside delivery and book drop off only during that time. All staff will be back in the building effective June 29th. The hours will be Monday through Friday from 10 AM until 5 PM. And again, it will continue with curbside pickup and drop off only. We're changing the hours to five, or from 10 AM to 5 PM to allow the custodial staff time every morning from the Board of Ed to come in and clean the building to make sure that it's safe for our employees. Beginning on July 6th, the front desk will open. So residents will be able to come in and specifically request books and/or videos. The computer area will be open, but they will be spread out. The patrons will be responsible for cleaning the computers upon their departure. And we'll place plastic keyboard covers over all of the equipment. Curbside pickup will continue to be available for those 65 and over, or anyone with a compromised immune system. And we will have limited bathrooms open for the patrons, just in case those are needed. The plan will be reevaluated at the end of July to discuss changes based on the current situation that's going on. So plan on an update at our second meeting in July for discussion on what to do for office. For Town Hall, effective June 29th, all staff will be reporting to the building each day for regular hours. The public will remain limited through appointments only, will be keeping the front door attendant in place. Mostly because it will be tax collection time. A lot of people that'll be showing up to pay taxes, so we need to have someone that's assigned to keep that process orderly. The plan also will be reevaluated the end of July to discuss changes based on the current situation. The community center, effective June 29th, all staff will be reporting to the building each day for regular hours. The building will remain temporarily closed to the public until programming resumes. The recreation staff will be focused on outdoor activities and are working on a potential sports camp model to replace our normal camp. Details are still being worked on, I expect to be emailing that information out to you in the next day or two. As that information just came into Rory and I this morning, so we're still going through and working on it with, with Mary and her staff. The senior center and senior programming will remain closed at this point until we get to a place that is safer for folks 65 and older to, to be coming out a little bit more. The police and Department of Public Works will continue to work in their existing schedules as they have throughout the shutdown. So that's kind of a, in a nutshell, where we stand with what we'll call our, our Phase Two. And how we're slowly moving our staff back into the buildings. On the finance side, as of yesterday, June 15th, current year tax collection for fiscal year 20 stood at 98.34%, in comparison for fiscal year 2019. We stood at 98.34% at the end of May, so we're lagging about two weeks behind. The difference in real dollars, though, is actually only $55,691.49. So again, while we're two weeks behind on a percentage basis, we're only about $55,000 behind what we actually collected last year. As of today, our deficit, our projected deficit for fiscal year 20 is down to 268,000, which is a slight improvement from our last meeting. Again, the biggest driver of this deficit is the $300,000 reimbursement for Chatfield-Lopresti School, which we had expected to receive prior to year end, but will now not be receiving until late summer or early fall. So had we received that as expected, we'd actually be looking at a small surplus for the year. So that is the credit to Doug Thomas and his staff for how hard they're working over there keeping our finances going. And then finally, the reported cases of COVID-19 have definitely slowed over the last week or so in Seymour. Our last actual case was Thursday. So that's, that's certainly a good thing. In total, we've had 227 reported cases. And unfortunately, we've had 41 deaths to date, so. I'm obviously not providing updates like I had in the past because it's, it's slowed down. You should still be receiving the daily updates from Jess at the Nagasaki Valley Health Department with all the numbers in there, so. But if you ever have any specifics, need any additional information, just give me a call, shoot an email, and let me know. So with that, that closes the first selectmen's report. I'm gonna move all of you back over to the screen. All right, we're gonna move on to item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding waiving of bidding process pursuant to Charter Section 2-268 for failover server cluster. So one of the items that was in our capital plan had to do with this, the server cluster. We have Rob Dyer, the town's IT director, on the line with us, so he's gonna go over and explain this. The reason why we are, and I'll let Rich talk a little bit more about this after as well, are waiving the bidding process, because there's really no way that we can specifically go out to bid on this. This is more of providing information and then these vendors coming back and providing solutions to us, which Rob will actually talk us through. He is going to tell us the vendor and the solution that he thinks fits best with our, our long-term IT plan, and then we'll take it from there. So Rob, if you would?
Thank you, sir. So as First Selectman Miller just explained, we are looking at, we kind of started this process a few months prior to the COVID-19 situation. We had thought that we were gonna have a lot more time, you know, for, for planning purposes and, and to really go through the motions with getting back bids and build outs and everything else. I had gone through some preliminary work to, to do some of that groundwork. But then the, the COVID-19 situation hit and, you know, it was, it became difficult to get in touch with vendors. So what I had to do is kind of look at the stuff that I already had. And the, the more pressing issue and the thing that I think everybody kind of needs to be aware of is that we're coming to the end of our fiscal year. And at the end of the fiscal year, we have to either renew our maintenance agreements with our current infrastructure. So things such as, you know, maintenance agreements on servers, you know, hard drive goes down, we have to replace that. Or if there's tech assistance required with a particular piece of infrastructure, you know, we have ongoing agreements with, with companies. And as technology gets older, those costs increase, right? So at some point, it's, it's planned obsolescence and we need to just say, okay, it's time to move on with, with newer technology. So that's, that's kind of the, the impetus behind why we're doing what we, what we're doing. As Mr. Miller mentioned, this is stuff that was in the capital plan. We had anticipated having a little bit more time to work on this, but that didn't unfortunately pan out. So, so that's kind of the backstory behind that. Just to give you guys an idea of what we're actually talking about here, the, the schools have been on a failover cluster since 2010. And I've been before you as a board, I think, three or four times now already. And you might remember that one of the things I harp on constantly is the ability for fault tolerance, cybersecurity, and the ability for us to be able to recover from a disaster situation. So the schools have had a lot of redundancy and capabilities built in since 2011, 2012, really with a lot of the Chatfield-Lopresti project. A lot of this technology itself, even though it was in its infancy at the time, it was put into place. So the schools have had this capability. And, and what the capability really is, in a nutshell, is rather than having like your computer on your desk, okay? Or a server in a closet somewhere, as a physical server that runs, say, your email. We actually now are using virtualization and high-density failover clustering. So what that basically means is, instead of all of your eggs being in one basket within a physical server, we are creating virtual instances of servers that run on, on, on top of a physical server. And if something were to happen to that server, you have built-in fault tolerance where another piece of that server would take over the workload. Okay? So that capability has existed at the schools since 2011, 2012. The town has not had that functionality and capability. It's something that was part of our long-term planning when we initially kind of merged the, the departments together. And so what we're looking at doing now is the, the technology that was originally put into place back in the Chatfield-Lopresti project is coming to end of life. It's, it's coming up on 10 years old now. It's, it's end of life from the manufacturer. And again, as I explained earlier, as these things become end of life, you're, you're pushed into asking for maintain support from third-party vendors who have refurbished equipment. And it becomes now cost prohibitive to keep these things going. So that being said, what we're looking at doing here is extending, both renewing the school's capability of doing, of having that, as well as bringing the town's servers and resources under that same umbrella. And so what you see, I believe we included in your packets, are two different solutions. And, and it's, it's difficult to kind of compare the two because it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison. There's two different technologies there. One of them is a, what's referred to as a three-tier solution, where you have a, a storage area network with servers that are storing your data on that storage area network. Another, the other one is called HCI or hyper-converged infrastructure, where the SAN and the, and the server itself are in one physical box. So those are the two solutions that, that we explored, the two different options. I, I have to be honest, the hyper-converged solution is, is newer technology, it's much more streamlined technology. But it's also more expensive. And believe it or not, the two quotes that you have there, if, if you look, the hyper-converged solution is the Nutanix one from SHI. I believe it's $117,000. And that provides five years of, in that $117,000 is five years of maintenance and support included with that. So it's, when you look at it on its face, it's the cheaper of the two options, right? Because the other one, I believe, HPE Nimble, came back at around 121, somewhere's in that area. So you're looking at about a $4,000 to $5,000 difference. However, here's the, here's the rub. When we talk about fault tolerance and high availability, you have, with the Nutanix solution, the hyper-converged solution, the $117,000 solution, you have one physical box in one physical building, okay? When you talk about the $122,000 solution, that one includes two physical sites with redundant capabilities, so an exact replica at both physical sites. So we could, in essence, put one site at the high school and a second site at the police department. And God forbid, something ever happens to the high school, catches on fire, server room burns down, what have you. It would automatically, without missing a beat, fail over to the police department and all of the network resources and data are available. We could do that with the Nutanix and hyper-convergence solution, but it would be double that $117,000 cost. So there, you know, and again, there is fault tolerance built into it, but that physical location, having that one single point of failure is concerning to me. And I think it warrants spending the extra $4,000 to be able to have, you know, that, that fault tolerance and that second site capability. So again, this is, this is kind of a project to further the, the goal of merging the, the schools and the town's resources. Whereas now we have separate individual servers that are very exposed to building problems, environmental conditions, hacking, you know, ransomware, things of that nature. This kind of brings everything under one roof and expands our failover capabilities so that the town is on par with the schools. So I hope that explains what I wanted to explain. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, Rob, I'll, I guess I'll just kind of kick it off. Digital back office, we've done a lot of work within the past. So obviously, this is all compatible.
Yeah, so-
Firewall with-
Yeah, so the thing, so, so again, just a brief little recap, we have done quite a few things. I think, I think Seymour, in a number of publications at least, has been recognized as a leader in certainly our region, if not the state in cybersecurity. You know, we put in the next-gen firewall, we put in next-gen antivirus and spyware protections. This is kind of the next logical step, and, and it dovetails with what we've already done, or what we need to do anyways within, in terms of infrastructure. So all of that previous work we have done through digital back office, they've, they've been a good partner of ours. But the, the larger piece here is that there's a network component, right? So when we talk about having two sites that are, that are redundant for each other, and there's that network communication that needs to happen, right? Because we're talking about now merging the schools and the town, their respective networks on a much higher level. Digital back office is our provider that takes care of our wide-area network. So all of our VLANs, firewalls, access control rules, everything like that. So it does lend itself to the project that they are familiar with our network already. And, you know, we don't have an extra company, an extra layer of a company saying, well, it's not our fault, it's their fault. They don't have it configured properly or what have you. So, so that's a, a natural benefit to, to having done a lot of work with them previously. And again, the, the price point was, was absolutely unbelievable. And HP was very, very good, along with digital back office, they worked very hard to not only come back, I mean, honestly, it blew me off my chair when they sent me the, the proposal. And I saw what, that they were including two sites basically for what Nutanix wanted for one. And then in addition to that, when I explained to them that the project may be on hold because of COVID-19, you know, they, they again came back and worked with us and said, we can get you 0% financing with deferred payments. So I, I think all of that kind of, you know, made me say, this is, this is who we need to go with.
And then, Rob, just one last question. By putting this new system in, is, what is the annual savings on, or projected potential annual savings? On things like licensing and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's, it's tough, it's tough to nail down, right? Because it's, it's hard to anticipate a hard drive failure, or it's hard to anticipate, you know, the, the tax office needing more space for their SQL server. So it's, it's hard to say, you know, these are tangible numbers, right? But what I can tell you is, is what we will be able to do once this is done. And for example, the police department has an external email server that, that they're paying a subscription fee for. And off the top of my head, I, I couldn't tell you what that cost is. It's, it's significant, though. So that would go away because we would now have the capability and storage space of merging the police department emails with the town email server, and we no longer have that expense. Another thing I'm gonna be looking at also, and once we, once we kind of converge all of this, this huge network down into a more concise, workable network, is we're currently, we currently have three separate backup appliances, right? Where we're running backups. Two of those will likely be able to go away and the associated maintenance costs with those. So, so, you know, and, and again, as I said earlier, we, we have maintenance agreements that are coming up on these servers, and some of our servers are end-of-life anyways. So just to give you an idea, one server can cost you $6,000, right? So we're talking about eliminating all of our servers townwide. We don't need servers, we don't need to buy any servers. For the next five years at least, everything is 100% covered. And that's for the schools as well as the town. So the schools also have those recurring maintenance costs that, that would be recouped, along with the police department, along with the town. So it's, it's difficult to quantify every single one that's gonna be, be able to be saved. If you'd like more information on that, we can probably pick through the budget and figure out what things go away, what things are replaced by this, and come up with an actual dollar figure. My guess is, though, we're going to be net, net positive in terms of savings.
Well, that's, I think that's the point I'm trying to get across, that while this is in our capital plan already, you know, the money's already been budgeted. By taking this step, you know, what could be a $25,000 expense over five years, we could actually be knocking it down to, you know, actually 10 or 15, so I think there's a lot of-
I think that's a conservative, that's a conservative estimate.
Right, to the, to the solution. So, again, Rob, I, I appreciate the effort that you put into this stuff. Because to your point, we are kind of on the, the leading edge of this stuff. But you've been able to do this very budget-friendly, for lack of a better term. The solutions all seem to make sense, the solutions all tie into one another. It's, it's step one leads to step two and so on and so forth, where a lot of the places are kind of scattered, and they put something in, and then two years later, they're putting in something different, having to spend extra money to fix it. It's nice when all the pieces kind of come together. So with that being said, who has questions? So just kind of throw your hands up and then I'll, I'll go. So we'll start upper right-hand corner, Chris, go ahead.
Start with Rob, start with Bob, because I'm gonna be a while.
All right, so Bob Finley, go ahead.
Yeah, so, Rob, on the two options, right? So the Nutranix, now you said there's, there's no redundancy on that, but they would probably do periodic backups? Or is that something that we would have to manage ourselves? Do they write that as a service, or?
So that's kind of a, it's kind of a nuanced answer, actually. But, but let me, let me try and see if I can, if I can capture what you're asking and address it. So the, so Nutanix, it, it does have failover capability and redundancy capabilities, right? I don't want to misconstrue that point. So, so here's, so here's what happened. So let's say, let's say this, the Nutanix box itself loses a hard drive. There's built-in redundancy for, to be able to lose that hard drive, okay? So there's redundancy within the box. Where there is not redundancy is if that building that that box lives in catches on fire or gets flooded or-
It becomes an uptime issue, so they're giving you turn servers, so you can, you can be uptime almost immediately on the other option.
Correct, there's, there's very, there's, there's almost zero lag time doing a synchronous replication between the two, and-
I just wanted to get clarity on the backups, because that-
Yep.
You still get backups out of the system.
So, yeah, and so in terms of backups, and the reason why I said it was nuanced is because the, the SANs have the capability of doing what is called snapshots. Okay, so, so it will take snapshots periodically. And so like, I, so it, a snapshot is not necessarily a backup either, though, right? So I can say, okay, you know, we, we lost something very important yesterday. And I can look on the Nimble box and I can say, you know what, restore this particular server back to yesterday's snapshot. That's not our backup. Our backup would be Kurt Miller calls me and says, oh my God, I lost the entire budget document, can you restore that? I, I can then go in and restore the file from backup. The, the Nimble box cannot do file-level backup and restore, it does server level. So oops, our email server blew up when we restored it.
You gotta restore both, right?
Exactly, and, and, and the difference between the two is, is literally uptime and the two different sites and not having that single point of failure.
Okay, and then there's no service contract available, or they, what's the, would there be an annual service contract on the Nimble system?
So, so if you look in the, in the quote there, it's, it's provided in the cost for a period of five years. So we will have no-
I'm sorry, I thought that was on the Neutronics, not the-
It's on both.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, both, both systems, both systems are completely covered, and we should have no unanticipated cost for a period of five years at least.
Okay, okay, that's all I wanna know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Chris, go ahead.
Okay, a few questions. If we were to, assuming we were to go with the HPE boxes, are we having direct replicas? In other words, the same thing is happening on server A as on unit B? Or are we gonna be load balancing?
So they're not gonna be used for load balancing. What will likely, those are, those proposed solutions for the two sites are sized for, I believe, N plus two is what they refer to it as. But, but basically, sized it so that it would accommodate our current workloads, plus an additional, I think, 30% capability. And that's on a single site, right? So, so the second site will be used as synchronous replication is what it's referred to as. So you have synchronous and asynchronous. Synchronous means you make a change, it immediately replicates across to the second backup site and, or to the second location there. And that is so that you have literally zero downtime. So something happens to server cluster A, server cluster B picks up without missing a beat.
How much additional bandwidth would that use compared to what a load-balancing solution would be? Because if you're going-
Well, well, so it, it uses, it uses quite a bit more, right? But it will have zero impact on, on us because of the future-proof planning that we've done when we designed our network. We built it such that we have 10 gig links in the backbone. So we will come nowhere near our head, our headroom on that bandwidth.
Okay, as, these are file servers. I see that there's terabyte plans, you know, gigabyte plans, et cetera. Is there flexibility if we go over that?
So these are not, these are not subscription plans, right? We're not, we're not renting cloud storage. These are essentially, we're building our own cloud environment in Seymour. I am not, I'm not a huge subscriber in the cloud storage just yet. I, I don't think it's wise to put, you know, Seymour financial data next to JP Morgan Chase financial data. We're a relatively small target right now. So for that reason, I like to keep as much as I can in-house. That's, that's in effect what we're doing. So in terms of the storage space itself, we're not, it's not something we're renting, so there's no fees for going over. As I said, it's sized to about 30% over what our current capacity is. So if we ever do start approaching that 30% limit, and again, it took us 10 years to even get to the point we're at now, the additional 30% should give us, you know, quite a bit more. And if we ever do, it's fully expandable, so we can very easily spend $1,000 and, you know, add another-
Add another drive.
Storage space, right?
Okay, so in, under the second plan, because everything that you've told, everything about the second plan, I'm not even thinking about the first plan, if I'm being honest. There would be a definite, like you said, the police department and brain farting, help me.
High school. But, but to, to be honest, I just, I just threw those out there. I would, I would like to sit down with the network engineers and come up with, you know, what, and, and likely some of our emergency management personnel. I think the police department would probably be a logical place because it's the Emergency Operations Center. It has its own independent power supply, a very large uninterruptible power source, battery backup. So I, I think that's a, that's a good site to choose. The downside being, it's not a very accessible building. You know, if I need to get in there and do maintenance, it's, it's not the easiest place to get into. And the high school is the second place that I was considering because that is where the internet comes in. It's kind of the, the hub, if you will, of the town's internet access.
Okay.
And it also has its own dedicated generator and power system that's on natural gas. But again, I would, I would likely involve the emergency management team to, you know, to discuss that because we're, we're now putting, it's not just a school decision anymore. Now we're including the town's emergency management component, public safety, you know, fire, things of that nature. So I, I think it's, it's probably prudent to include those folks in the discussion of where, what sites we choose.
Okay, so in that case, there would definitely be like, let's say, but for the sake of argument, let's say Police Station High School. So there's a situation where A would, server A, let's say the high school, would always be the one in use, and server B would be the backup?
Correct.
Okay, would that alternate?
Not unless it needs to. For example, if we're doing updates and maintenance on site A, we may say, hey, site B, you, you take over the workload while we're working on site A. And then we'll probably fail it back to, to site A so that we can then work on site- And then we'll probably fail it back to, to site A so that we can then work on site B. What that translates to from the user's perspective is they have no idea what's even going on.
Right. Okay, that's good for me.
All right, so any other questions on the solution itself?
All right, so Rich, can you take us through the process of section two dash two sixty-eight, please?
Yes, so in order to avoid the competitive bidding process in, in this certain situation, two dash two sixty-eight of the Seymour Town Code provides certain exemptions. One of them is two two sixty-eight E one, money's available in the budget. It would require the vote of at least four members to determine that it is needed by the town for a proper purpose, which it certainly is, that the need is emergent in nature to such a degree that the time required for advertising and competitive bidding would impose a substantial hardship upon the town. And the description by Rob Dyer seems to fit this perfectly. You have a July one date looming. You had difficulties given the COVID pandemic, a very unusual event, which caused there to be a paucity of responses from those who are i- in this particular industry. And because of that, I would suggest that when the motion is made, that the, the findings are made to support it in accordance with two dash two sixty-eight E one of the Seymour Town Code.
Right, so does anybody have any questions on process for Rich, what we're doing? No, okay. Okay, so with that being said, I will entertain a motion that we award
the quotes from Digital Back Office for the NPE Nimble Storage Adaptive Flash Arrays and Supported Server Hardware as presented by IT Director Rob Dyer in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that we waive the bidding process pursuant to Town Code Section two dash two sixty-eight as advised by Town Council Patrulla.
That's a motion by Bob. Is there a second?
Seconded, Chris Bowen.
Seconded by Chris. Is there any further discussion?
All I'm gonna, Rob, yeah, I'm gonna say is that the second site is huge. You always think that you're not going to have an issue until everything's on fire, literally in this case. So, yeah, having the second site at that price, this is great.
Yeah, the, the price and having two, three dozen servers is important. I agree with you, Chris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so anything else? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Rob, thank you very much for your time and efforts on this project. It is greatly appreciated. So if you want to give the folks at Digital Back Office a call tomorrow, let them know that the bid's been awarded to them.
If they want to get any necessary paperwork and everything over as quickly as they can, Rory and myself will get it over to Rich. And review it quick and then we'll get everything going.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is appointments. We have two appointments for tonight. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment dated June sixth, twenty twenty. Motion by Chris, he raised his hand, second by, he raised his hand as well.
I was scratching my head, but okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. The item number nine is tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tax Collector's Report dated June eleventh, twenty twenty. Is submitted by Susan Bowen from our tax office.
Motion is made by Anne Marie, raising her hand, by Trish, who raised her hand as well. Is there any discussion? Make sure there's no conflicts. A hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item number ten is transfers. We have no transfers before us this evening. Item number eleven is correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence. Obviously, we have the check runs for your review. We have a breakdown of Governor's Executive Order seven XX that was done by Rich. Just to give us an idea of what we expect to be seeing in the, in the coming days and how that will work. And then also, we received from the state of Connecticut, Department of Public Health and the American Heart Association. We've again been designated a heart-safe community. So credit to that goes to Kyle Kelly and the folks over at Seymour Ambulance, who worked very hard on, once again, getting us this designation. So I wanted to share that with all of you and also to give some well-deserved credit to, to Kyle and his team over there. So that closes our correspondence. We move on to item number twelve, public comment.
Or has any comment come in since we've begun?
No, sir.
And I see we still have no member of the public on with us. So we'll move on to item number thirteen, excuse me, which is selectmen's public comments.
We're left and move across, so Trish Danka, you're our leadoff hitter tonight.
Everyone stay well. I have nothing.
Fantastic, Trish. We like the speed at which you work. Chris Bowen, you are next on the list.
I have nothing. Be safe.
Fantastic. Anne Marie, your bonus.
I have something.
Go ahead.
Oh, just let you go know that the Seymour Department of Public Works has their own Facebook page now. So people can comment on that, which I think is really good. So now, if there's any questions, it's manned, they can answer questions. Relatively quick getting it back to the people. And just to let everybody know, WPCA is meeting on the eighteenth for their budget. So it is a public meeting, so.
Yeah, to that, if anyone is interested in just listening to the meeting, the plan for them is to workshop on the budget. I'd seen a preliminary draft that was sent over to me. I'm sending a bunch of questions to Anne Marie so they can be specifically asked. Because looking at some of these numbers, they just don't make sense to me. So I'd like some explanations as to how they're coming up with these numbers and, and things like that. So, but again, it's, it's a working workshop, I guess, for lack of a better term. So it might be good, anyone who has some interest to listen, if you need that information, let us know. We'll make sure we get you the Zoom information over to you. All right, Mr. Bruno.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the Nogatuck Valley Health Department for the updates. Much appreciated to see what's going on with the pandemic in the valley. It's been great to watch the curve get flattened over time since mid to late March when they started sending us that data and sharing it. The other thing I'd like to say regarding COVID-19 is I hope people in Seymour stay vigilant and be smart. Continue to do what we need to do so we don't have a second wave come and crush us down the road. And the other thing is, I guess there's going to be, since the food banks are now reaching out for assistance, we have a food drive for the Seymour Oxford Food Bank this Friday and Saturday at Seymour Stop and Shop. If you want to sign up to take part in that, there are some hours volunteer slots that are open Friday and Saturday. You can contact the rec department, contact Mary or Tara.
And just also along those same lines, at the Seymour Sikhs on Saturday, we'll be doing a mask drive from ten AM to one PM at the Seymour Community Center. So if anyone is in need of masks, please let them know. It's out on Facebook. It's been shared a bunch of times already, which is great. They can swing down. And just also on a side note, they are also buying lunch for all of our first responders on Friday afternoon, which is really nice. Be dropping off lunches at the PD, at, at the ambulance and then at Citizens Engine for the Fire Department. And then they will disperse those, obviously, up to, to Great Hill as well. But just want to say thank you to, to the Sikhs for, for doing what, what they do. They've always, they're a group that is very ingrained in the community, constantly helping out, always looking to volunteer, to donate, which is, which is great. So they're just great citizens, so. But I just wanted to give them a little plug to try to get as many people there as possible. Normally, they're giving out the Klondike bars, at least the, the mask won't be melting, so which will be, which will be nice. So, Mr. Van Agen, you are next on, on the list.
Case to shine.
Yes, that is beautiful. That's impressive.
I like that. It's, we'll be wrapping up this Sunday, Father's Day, so please make a donation in honor of somebody who's been a great father figure to you or to your father. We are, we were aiming for a hundred thousand and last I saw at today's marketing meeting, we're just at ninety-five thousand. So get us right over that hump. A chance to shine, CT. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Finley?
No, I just, I've been able to get out to a couple of the restaurants kind of in the soft opening here. And you can see everybody trying to, you know, abide by the rules. And it's good to see the restaurants start to see some people show up and show up some, and show up some business. That's going to be important to get kickstarted, but they are following the rules and, you know, I want to see the town open soon, so. It's good, good to see.
No, that's good. And, you know, obviously, by my side out on, on this weekend. But it was nice to see the, you know, the restaurant owners doing all that they can to make sure that they're, they're abiding by the rules. So actually, if people were lingering at a table, at least the place that Bob and I were together, you know, the owner was going right over telling people, hey, you gotta sit back.
So it's great to see. You know, these are restaurants that have been struggling for the last three months. And, you know, obviously, they want to try to bring as much revenue in the door, but it's great to see how well they're trying to abide by those rules and everything else. So tomorrow, when it all opens up inside, I encourage everybody to get out and, you know, have a lunch, have a dinner. Again, try to keep supporting these restaurants and let's keep them all going, so hopefully we don't lose any of these, these restaurants. Rich, anything you'd like to add?
No, it was just good seeing everyone tonight. Thank you.
All right, and Rory Burke, anything we've missed?
No, sir.
All right, so with that being said.
Make it much adjourned.
To adjourn.
Why, why don't I give it to him when he sings it?
I know, you gotta give it to him. He sang.
All right, motion by Chris, seconded by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Mark the meeting closed at seven forty-seven.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Take care.
Thanks, guys.